We'll have a moment of silent meditation and pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open this meeting of the Montague County Commission this July 30th, 2025. It's a little after 10:00 in the morning. We're joined by all three commissioners. Our administrator is out today and filling in as our office manager and grant coordinator, Colleen Kinn. Morning, Colleen.
Good morning.
Morning.
There are 58 exonerations for $30,436.91. Minutes for July 23rd, 2025. Vouchers, General County, $94,777.39. Coal Severance, $8,582.22. 911, $480. Chestnut Ridge Park, $816.17. Camp Muffley, $13,639.20. ARPA, $167,036.34. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $8,067.45. Home confinement, $7,886.47. Chestnut Ridge Park, $607.59. Camp Muffley, $829.70 for a voucher total of $1,610,098. Position vacancies for boards and authorities are listed on our website and fiduciary orders for July 30th, 2025.
Move that we approve the consent agenda items as presented?
Second.
First and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 It looks like we have a fiduciary order. Or no, we have a few issues.
Yeah, yes.
So we've got the estate of Deborah McCartl. And that request for... It was an objection to accounting and various other issues with the estate filed by Jeremy Kristoff in the estate of Deborah McCartl. So just general dissatisfaction with the way the estate's going. Is the best way to summarize that letter. How would the commission like to proceed on this?
Well, though he sent us a letter clearly objecting to the way the estate's going, but he didn't. There was no specific ask.
Right.
So I don't know whether he would like to have the administrative administrator replaced, whether he wants to be that. I think we need more clarification on what he's actually asking for.
Right. Fair point.
So possibly could we, would it be proper to respond to Mr. Kristoff asking him, I mean...
What he wants.
Yeah, what he wants. I mean, if he wants it to refer to a fiduciary commissioner, then he would have to be willing to, you know, he has to understand what that means. He'd have to step up, pay the deposit. And so I think we just need a little bit more clarification from him. So possibly if I direct a motion to have estates respond to Mr. Kristoff, laying out his options and asking him to more clearly state what he would like us to address. Because otherwise, the...
Right.
We don't really have an action yet.
Right.
We don't regularly reach into these estates and check on the status. That's the, the state's office does that.
So to summarize, your motion would be to just refer to downstairs and have the estate departments send him a letter indicating what his options are at this point?
Yes, and asking for a specific request.
I'll second that.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have an objection in the estate of Beverly Jean Short filed by Brian Price. There was a claim filed by Mon Health in excess of $85,000. And Mr. Short has, Mr. Price has objected to that claim.
And I understand that one is already with a fiduciary commissioner?
I believe it was to start as the estate exceeded a certain level. It automatically gets referred to fiduciary commissioner. George Armstead is the commissioner on this one.
So would we refer the inquiry to the fiduciary commissioner?
Yes.
We're not referring, we're not assigning a fiduciary commissioner. We're just letting them know that there's, there's an issue and ask them to address it.
Probably already has the correspondence in his file because it's, everything's copied to the fiduciary commissioner. But I guess just to ask estates to have him address it.
Yep. Okay, so I would move that we would ask estates to ask the fiduciary commissioner to address this correspondence.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the estate of Shirley J. Buzo. We have a, a letter from Tim Bezo asking to compel the fiduciary commissioner to either have a hearing that he previously requested where he gave the $500 good faith deposit to set the hearing, either to have the hearing or to return the deposit or, and to remove the estate from this, this round of the administrative closure list as this issue hasn't been addressed yet.
So we referred it to a fiduciary commissioner in March, I'm sorry, May 7th, 2025. And he filed, he filed an object to resolve the objection, the annual accounting filed in April of '24. So he's indicating that he hasn't said anything. So my original motion was to be to ask the fiduciary commissioner to provide a recommendation or an update within the next 30 days. But we just received an update from the fiduciary commissioner stating that this case is in litigation. And there's mediation scheduled. So when it comes to other legal matters, we usually just let those run its course.
Sure.
So I think that we could, that, that letter from Mr. Gutt, I assume would have been sent to...
Mr. Buzo.
Mr. Buzo.
He was copied on the bottom.
Yeah, so I say we take no action at this time. Because he has been updated now from the fiduciary commissioner and should understand that there's a legal matter pressing and that has to run its course.
Sounds good. I don't see the need for a motion, so. Any other fiduciary orders?
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on, introduction of new employees, personnel changes. First, county clerk. We have Caitlin Harris full-time and Samantha Ryder full-time.
Yes, they're both full-time permanent employees at a rate of pay of $3,750 and their start dates are August 1st.
Move that we approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
The first and the second, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, youth services center, Emily Livengood, relief worker part-time and Caitlin Bauer, relief worker part-time. I threw the S on there at the very end, but it sounded a little weird.
Okay, so they're both part-time employees, not eligible for benefits. Their starting rate of pay is $16.40 an hour and their first day would be today.
Move that we approve the personnel as presented?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next, we have, I believe, an introduction on our next employee, Chestnut Ridge Park. And I'll let our director of parks, Sheriff Petsco, take that over.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I am very pleased to announce that with your approval, we would like to have Meredith Ible become our superintendent at Chestnut Ridge Park. She would be making a salary of $35,000, living on the property, be full-time with benefits, and her start date would be this Friday, August 1st.
Wonderful. Thompson, is it your park?
Thank you. Very excited to move forward at the, to accept her as our superintendent.
Second.
First and the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Welcome, we've been waiting for you.
Welcome.
And I have a funny story. Yesterday I was at Cooper's Rocks and they had a thunderstorm there and I'm a city boy. I never heard thunderstorms up in the mountains and I got real scared and everyone goes, you're from the city, aren't you? I had never heard anything like that before.
It was right over us.
Yes, it was. Very excited.
Me too, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. Good luck getting settled in. Next, we have our comments from the public. I will open that at this time. Anyone wanting to come forward, state your name, address, and you're welcome to state your piece. I believe we have a delegate McCormick here, it'll start.
Thank you, gentlemen. My name's David McCormick. I'm a delegate and house delegates representing the 82nd district here in Mon County. I just wanted to commend you all for a resolution that's coming forth today opposing the Marl pipeline, air power line rather. And, you know, this is a bipartisan issue. You know, it's about property values and increased rates for ratepayers. I don't see West Virginia and West Virginians benefiting from this. You know, in being just a vehicle to get more power to Virginia to help their economic development efforts with data centers. I'd rather see them come here, frankly. And, you know, the, you know, Virginia doesn't have enough power. Well, maybe they shouldn't have closed all their power plants. And they wouldn't have this problem. So I'm completely in agreement with you. I'm against this power line project for Nextera Energy. They're the largest energy transmission company in the world. And this is going to be a battle, but I feel like if everybody pulling the rope in the same direction in Charleston and here, the county commission, hopefully we can make a difference. But I just wanted to say thank you for your, for your resolution and I'm in complete support of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
One of the first ones to bring the issue at least to my attention, so I appreciate that. Moving on, anyone else for comments from the public? No? With that, then we will close, comments from the public. Next, we have Sheriff Todd Forbes, which I believe I saw Kelly Palmer there to do that, so.
The sheriff could not be here yet. The situation, so I present you the...
I don't like the sound, I don't like the sound of that.
That's not good when you...
How about a routine situation you take care of on a daily basis?
Okay.
Wonderful.
On a daily basis.
Thank you.
That is just the final report for fiscal year 2025.
Wonderful.
Is in compliance with state code.
Any Cliff Notes?
Um, no, every, we're in the black. It's 68 pages, so happy reading.
Do we need to move to accept it?
Yep.
Okay.
I move to accept the 2025 sheriff's settlement as proposed, as presented.
Second.
First and the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you all.
Next, we have a proclamation, Montague County Goes Purple. So we have a purple.
Yeah, purple.
Good morning, I'm Rhonda Van Kirk. Thank you for having me here this morning. I am an ambassador and the state resource director for West Virginia Goes Purple founded by Tara Mason. I will read the proclamation from Montague County. Says, whereas National Recovery Month is held every September to increase awareness and understanding of mental health and substance abuse disorders to celebrate those in recovery for their strength and perseverance. And whereas the color purple has been used to symbolize the struggle taking place in communities across the country as individuals, family, healthcare providers, and law enforcements face the growing crisis of opioid use. And whereas Mon County Goes Purple movement was founded by Tara Mason, founder and executive dress, director of the Hope Dealer Project to raise awareness and support, inspire and empower those affected by substance use and disorder. Whereas Mon County Goes Purple is awareness campaign focused on prevention, treatment, and recovery resources available in the community and will emphasize the role of local government plays in combating the epidemic. And whereas Mon County Goes Purple strives to promote conversations around the dangers of substance misuse and abuse and encourage the community to take a stand against it. Now therefore, the county commission of Montague County proclaim the month of September 2025 to be Montague County Goes Purple and calls upon the people of Mon County to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies. The Montague County Commission encourages the community to wear purple, light up your homes, businesses with purple lights, tie a purple ribbon on a tree, fence, or door, make a purple heart display, or get creative and display in another purple way. Adopted this 30th day of July 2025 by our wonderful county commission. And I would like to say that we want to be, our mission is to make West Virginia no longer known for tragedy, but the first state in U.S. history to unite all 55 counties in recovery, awareness, and hope. The proclamation that y'all have signed is more than symbolic. It's a statement of solidarity and a commitment of healing education and prevention. In closing, on behalf of founder and executive director Tara Mason, we see you, Mon County. Thank you for turning on the purple light. You're more than some, you're something bigger, a movement of healing, unity, and purpose. Together, we will show the nation what it truly means to be Mountaineer strong. And soon enough, our story will no longer be written by overdose statistics by our strength, recovery, and our unstoppable, unstoppable hope. Thank you so much.
I move that we approve the resolution as presented?
Second.
The first and the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Would you like a picture with it?
Please, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, so much.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful day.
I'll tell you what we can try and do. We may, if we can get the lights working, maybe for a week, we'll see if we could just do the lights, purple lights at night. I don't know if that's possible because, but if we could do that, and if we do, we'll make sure you're aware.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, do we have any grants, Colleen? No grants today, okay. Correspondents received a thank you from Robert Miller, executive director of the West Virginia Route 2 I-68 Authority for the annual contribution given by the Montague County Commission for fiscal year 2026. A letter from Hampshire County Commission asking for support in opposing the proposed Mid-Atlantic Resiliency Link High Voltage Transmission Project, which I believe we'll address here in a minute. See no unfinished business, move on to new business. To consider sponsorship of This Is Morgantown brand video production by InterAction Media in collaboration with the Morgantown Area Partnership.
I move to approve the county's participation in the $5,000 contribution to help fund the project as presented.
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Aye. And what this is, is they're doing a This Is Morgantown brand video that's PSA, that's being put together on behalf, by the, by the partnership. And we join seven other entities that have contributed to make this PSA happen. Those include W Medicine, Van Delia Health, Enrau, Clear Mountain Bank, Breeze Line, City Morgantown, and Hope Gas. But it's really kind of a highlighting of everything that's in Mon County, so.
Great.
We're glad to participate.
Moving on, consideration to approve customer service agreements with Republic Services for the following locations, Chestnut Ridge Park, Indian 63, Chestnut Ridge Park, Indian 67, Mon County Center 42, Mon County Justice Center, Lockside Road, and the Mon County Sheriff's Department.
I move to approve the customer service agreements as presented?
Second.
The first and the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on, consideration of resolution regarding the Mid-Atlantic Resiliency Link Project. I'd like to come on up and whoever's going to read it.
Could we go ahead and read it?
Yeah.
You're going to read it or you got it?
Whereas the Mid-Atlantic Link Marl Project proposed by Nextera Energy Transmission seeks to construct high voltage transmission lines through multiple counties in West Virginia, including Montague County. And whereas the Marl Project includes building a new approximately 105-mile, 500-kilovolt transmission line from a connection point near Gore, Virginia to existing substations in Allegheny County, Maryland, and Green County, Pennsylvania. And whereas West Virginia is fifth in the nation in energy production while we only consume three-fifths of the energy it generates and overall is a net exporter of electricity to the region. And whereas Montague County is home to two coal-fired plant, power plants, and a gas-fired power plant approved for construction by the West Virginia Public Service Commission, pending final financing, demonstrating that the county is already making a substantial contribution to regional energy needs. And whereas the Marl Project is intended to transport electricity across West Virginia to serve increased energy, energy demands particularly from data centers in Northern Virginia, effectively turning Montague County into a transmission corridor without delivering meaningful local benefit. And whereas the proposed routes would significantly irreparably harm landowners, farms, forests, and communities, including longstanding family properties and environmentally sensitive areas in Montague County for a transmission line that primarily serves out-of-state interests. And whereas the Montague County Commission values private property rights and the importance of protecting the livelihoods and quality of life of its residents. And whereas the project would negatively impact Montague County's property values, agriculture, tourism industry, and natural scenic integrity while providing only a marginal increase in local tax revenue. And whereas the project will ultimately be funded through regional utility rate increases, effectively forcing Montague County residents to help finance, finance a project that adversely affects their community without delivering any discernible net benefit to the affected property owners. Now therefore, we, the members of the Montague County Commission, do hereby formally oppose this siding, construction of the Marl 500-kilovolt overhead transmission lines within the boundaries of Montague County as such infrastructure would damage the natural beauty of our county, impair tourism, diminish property values, and for no commensurate benefit on local residents while forcing all of our citizens to ultimately pay for this project through increased electricity rates. And be it further resolved that we call on all elected officials representing Montague County to join the Montague County Commission in opposing this project in addition to urging the West Virginia Public Service Commission to reject this project when it comes before them for consideration. Adopted this 30th day of July, 2025.
I move that we approve the resolution as presented?
Second.
The first and the second, all in favor?
Well, can we have some discussion?
Sure. Sure.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, I mean, I know there was a lot of interest on this matter and eight months ago, I have it written down, eight months ago, the company came to us and all they said was they were building transmission lines on the right-of-ways. And if it wasn't for several of the residents who are here now, who came to the county commission, we really didn't know and Mr. McCormick, who brought it to our attention. So we did have due diligence and a lot of people said, well, why are you voting for it or against it? And we couldn't make a decision until we received all the material. And I want to congratulate my commissioners who asked and reached out to the company to come in and get information and we got the information. And basically, as the ordinance says, it was, to me, two questions that I wanted. How does it benefit our residents and are there concerns and costs to the project? And I believe that's what we did. And I want it very clear that even though we have this resolution, we didn't discuss it, promote it, or anything. We're discussing it. In fact, actually, this is the first time I knew that, you know, there was going to be one on it. Well, and we appreciate the information that it states. I just want to end my final comment. Well, one, there is a meeting on August 5th at University High School. I don't know the time.
6:30.
6:30. So for the public, if they want to be informed and find out a little bit more, I think, I think all three of us would like, recommend you all to go to that. And I want to end it this way. When someone said to me, one of the reporters asked, well, how would the Virginia residents feel? And I said, well, this is how I would respond. How would the Virginia residents feel if we built the transmission lines along their beaches? Which is what the residents are asking our citizens to do over our lakes and our property. And West Virginia is known as one of the most majestic states in the country. So why are we building the lines against the backs of our citizens? And that's why I will be supporting this resolution.
And I want to thank all of our informed citizens that, you know, took the effort to come in repeatedly and educate us. And again, like we told you, the way this question operates is, you know, we don't react when we first hear something. So I appreciate your patience in giving us the time and deference to firmly research this issue and make a decision that's based on all the information, not just part of the information. And everything, when we had the session with Nextera, everything that they are saying in regards to electricity needs is true. We just don't see a benefit to them running this line across our state, across our beautiful county, and not providing us any benefit. So it solves, it's to solve a problem, but somebody else's problem and not to be, not in my backyard. I think, you know, we as West Virginians have done a lot for this region and we've already done our fair share. And to be forced to accept this project without any benefit to our citizens while, while extremely impacting our citizens, isn't something that this commission can stand for. So I really do appreciate all of our informed residents that have gone through the effort to educate us. We will continue to pay attention and as this thing works its way through the PSC, I believe in October. And I have something else I want to bring up after we're done with this motion. But again, thanks. It's all, this is, this is how the system works. Again, politely and respectfully addressing things, we will do our due diligence. We'll find out what the issue is. And even if we don't have jurisdiction, we'll try to put people in the room that can actually answer your questions and get to some sort of resolution. So the thanks goes to really the residents that have really done a lot to make sure that this issue was raised. And Delegate McCormick, thank you very much because you were, you were front and center and really kind of, hey, what are you guys doing about this? So I really appreciate your efforts too and everyone's efforts.
Yeah, I like that sentiment. The first call I got on this was from Delegate McCormick and listened to his, his passion position on it and brought it to the other commissioners. And Sean and I attended the wonderful meeting that Beth Bossy organized up in Preston County. And we got all the information we could on it. To me, it's pretty simple. They want to shove those things down our throats and say, oh, by the way, you also get to pay for it. And by the way, you don't get any benefit for it. It's a no-brainer. We heard from folks on both sides of the aisle. It's the most, it's, it's the most one-sided thing I've been a part of with the commission as far as folks reaching out. I haven't heard a single person in, in proposing this, other than the folks proposing it, that were in favor of it. To a man and woman, everybody that called me was, was in opposition to this project and I can see why. So I too will be supporting the resolution.
All due respect, I mean, Tom said it when we met with them. You guys have a job to do.
Yeah.
They, they presented their information to the best of their, their knowledge. They couldn't answer a lot of our questions, which was a big red flag for me. Because they just didn't, you know, everything is, well, it depends. But again, they're very respectful. I haven't had one person complain about the, the Nextera media people. I had heard residents complain about landmans and doing...
Surveyors.
Surveyors and those things, you know, possibly being on their property without permission and things like that. But for the most part, this has been a very civil, public conversation, so.
It's a fair point. Everybody has a job to do and both sides have presented their cases respectfully and we do appreciate that. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye. I do have a corollary agenda item that I want to bring up because the letter from Hampshire County did raise a request. And they wanted us to, to join with them to be an overall part of a larger group. And I would recommend that we respond to the Hampshire County Commission to discuss ways that we could work together on this issue.
Second.
I'd like to have a little discussion on that. One of the things that we've talked about and possibly doing, and maybe this is something this group can do, was intervening on behalf of the county, as an affected party. So I did do some original research and assuming that the issue would need to be reviewed or approved by the Public Service Commissioner of West Virginia, the county could attempt to intervene in the case at the PSC. And that would, if we intervene, we are admitted to the case and then the county would be at the table as the case progresses. So we talked about, I brought that up to the commission and said, you know, what do you think? We're, at this time, not saying we're going to go it alone, but I would suggest maybe this group would, would do that, which would give us a seat at the table as the hearing progresses at the PSC, so.
Yeah, would agree. So we had a first and a second.
Yep.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye. Good idea.
Yeah, very good idea. Next, we have consideration to approve the payment of the sheriff's commission pursuant to West Virginia Code 11A117.
I would move to approve the sheriff's additional compensation as outlined in West Virginia State Code 11A117. This report this morning highlights that the sheriff has met the 85% threshold. So therefore, we're compelled by statute to approve this additional compensation.
Second.
First and the second, all in favor?
Aye. Which the additional compensation is $15,000, just for the record.
Moving on, reports from elected officials and department heads? Anyone here? We already heard from Delegate McCormick? Nothing from Granville? All right. Moving on, reports from county commissioners, Tom?
Yeah, I've been here, you know, two weeks and just have a couple of issues. Last weekend I was asked to give the... I was asked to give the commencement speech at the West Virginia Junior College at Chestnut Ridge Church, and it was a full circle moment for me, because my first job was in nineteen-seventy-six, when I was the admissions counselor at West Virginia Career College. So, it was really exciting to be there, and I had never been to the Chestnut Ridge Church. What a great facility, and the program was exceptional. And I just want to commend West Virginia Junior College, and also Chestnut Ridge Church. Wow, what a place. I mean, it was just unbelievable. Tended the greater CVB Morgantown Board, and the good news is, we're up five percent in hotel beds, which is very good considering, you know, we had, we're, after COVID, a lot took a hit, but things are going well. I'm very excited about that. Let's see. I want to personally thank Joe Pennell and Will Gaskins. The DOH has had an unbelievable response these last couple weeks. I don't know what has changed. I'm not going to get political of what caused it or not. But I can say, one thing that has happened is, the lack of doing the work on the culverts is causing a problem. The water is backing up, the trees and the, fall in there, and that's something, and I'm glad I had a delegate here, at least we can look at. I don't know what they can do besides maybe hiring out to clean the culverts, but that is causing a problem. And we have never had, I've been here since, like I said, seventy-one, and I've never seen two or three inches of rain in an hour's time. Usually, it's a two, three-day process, but like last Saturday, they came out on Smithtown Road, I know Route Nineteen, Glory Barn Road. I could go down the list of all the problems that are developing, and we need to look at that. And, and I can't say enough for the workers who came out there, and, you know, we're in the pouring rain and trying to clean things up. And hopefully, at the state level, if there could be more funding, or we could start bringing up some more DOH workers from the southern part of the state to work on that. I think it's something that we, we really need to look at. Let's see, I have this. Oh, I've asked, we finally received the contract for the new recycling center that we will be moving. It'll be going on the agenda with approval of the commissioners next week. And then, hopefully, I don't want to give dates, but hopefully, by the end of next week, we will have a new recycling center, and I look forward to the people coming and using it. And I, and I really am very excited about that. And that is it. Just some good news.
Tom, I heard that you were out on seventy-three actually clearing some of the, the storm damage.
Yes, and my wife is still very angry at me, at that. It was on the S-turn, if anyone who's been out on Smithtown Road, it was horrendous. And we, and I do have some good news. DOH is going to meet with the people who are doing the construction on the bridge, because the water is coming down. When you, you wiped out that much land and grass and so on, it has caused a problem. So, they are going to go out there and meet. And yes, it was dodging cars and directing traffic, and next time I do that, I'm going to bring a shovel. I was unprepared, and so people saw me running out like a little kid, grabbing rock and throwing it off and cracking. But again, I want to thank the citizens for not running me over. I do appreciate that.
You had your chance.
They had their chance. They had their chance.
You probably don't own any blazing orange. Since our last meeting, it's, it's been a light agenda. We did have staff reports on Friday, and we did have a, a nice meeting with the new president.
Yeah.
I'm encouraged talking to the new president. He's very, very down-to-earth. We talked about a lot of shared, shared ideas that we can move forward on. One particular is, you know, one of the first, the only ask he had of us was, could we focus on the Grumblin Island issue, which he's, he's been completely aware that this has been a sixty, seventy-year issue. But the most recent micro-simulation study said you could, you know, did present a number of alternatives, and did prove that you could shut down Grumblin Island and reroute the traffic, and it wouldn't have an adverse effect on the public. So, as an MPO and as a commission, we're certainly interested in that project, and, and share the president's desire to see that addressed. This is the first campus he's ever, or been present enough where a main artery, state road, runs right through campus. So, that's something that he really wants to address. So, we're looking forward to, and welcome and offered our assistance to help the new president be successful. Yesterday, I had our joint use management agreement tag up with the new management. That was the first meeting we had with Eastern Sports Management, which is managing the Aquatic Contract Center, and I'm very impressed, and look forward to the, taking the training wheels off and seeing them run with that facility and take it to higher levels than we've, we've since reached. Today is a regular day. We have no official work sessions, but we do have a few meetings with staff and legal counsel. Tomorrow, I have a board, Health Department Board of Health, and I have a local broadband team tag up. And Friday, we have another broadband team tag up, and then Comcast Projects tag up. But other than that, again, I want to relay my thanks to the citizens for, you know, their patience and working with us to try to solve a problem. So, thank you.
Just a few things. The opportunity to take in a little bit of the American Legion baseball tournament over the weekend, just kind of did a stop by, piggybacking on Tom's topic. The hotels were full, the restaurants were full. We had hundreds of all players and their families from all over the state. It was a great event, and further accentuates the importance, that the impact that Mylan Park has had on this community, having those ball fields out there. Some people complain sometimes about Mylan Park, that's a little farther out, or that it seems like a lot of the stuff goes out there, but that's where you can put stuff. And they've been a great partner in putting ball fields, and then with the new ice rink going out, it's, it's really had a positive effect on the community, at least in this regard. I also wanted to thank, with the, with the purple month, I wanted to thank the, the overall recovery community in Mon County. I've been helping with a situation of a citizen that's in dire need of some help, and I've reached out to various parties that I've gotten to know through my time on the commission, and they've been invaluable in helping assist this person in getting to, getting the help they need, and ultimately now getting to a rehab center. So, that's been, that's one that John Dower especially has been helpful in pointing me in the right direction to help them, and that's been really, really, really good to see. We rarely, I rarely see the ground effects of that, just we get it from above. So, I appreciate that. Also, wanted to thank the folks from First Energy and Xfinity. I couldn't go anywhere over the weekend without running into one of their vehicles. Not figuratively, or literally, more figuratively, they were, they were in my neighborhood, trying to get power and internet back on, and they were really working hard in a difficult situation. So, and also, the local DNR. We've had a fun little friend in our neighborhood, a little bear that has been terrorizing all of our trash, and we've called DNR several times, and they've advised us what to do and what not to do. And it hasn't worked yet, but it's a cute little guy, but he does like to eat the trash. But they were very responsive and helpful. So, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We are adjourned.